Ladies and gentlemen, join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting held on August 8th, 2022. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council wishes to change the minutes from the regular council meeting? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for their approval.
Some will.
Second it.
Motion's been made, seconded, discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council, and all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to either remove or add an item to the consent agenda?
Yeah, your honor, I have, I have item 8B that I'd like to remove from the consent agenda and consider that. It's a resolution to accept a $5,000 donation.
Okay. Any other changes?
Public Works has two additions.
To the consent agenda or to...
Well, we'll, no, not, I mean, we have to add them to the agenda.
Okay, but not the consent agenda.
No.
Any other changes to the consent agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the one item removed, item 8B. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'll adjourn the regular council meeting and call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on connecting Terry Street to Broadway Avenue. And prior to receiving any comments, I'd like to call on our city engineer, John Pratt, to give us an explanation of the item on the agenda.
Sure, thanks, Mayor and Council. A little background on this, the reason we're taking public comment or looking at it at this time is we're likely going to be doing some improvements in that area with sewer and water, extending that over to where the future food pantry would go, in the south end of the industrial park. So when that work happens, we would be doing some work in that cul-de-sac area on the north end of Broadway. That's sort of what facilitated the discussion about potentially connecting Broadway to Terry Street. So that's, that's the background. If we were to proceed with this, like I said, that work would be done probably next spring sometime when we do that work.
Kelsey, do we have any letters we've received regarding this?
Mayor and Council, there are three emails that you should have had on your desk that from neighbors in the Broadway area. I won't read all those, but we will submit those for, to be in the record.
Okay, thank you. So is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the issue? And if you do, would you please come to the podium and state your name and address for our minutes? So, anyone want to speak?
I don't want to speak, but I've been chosen.
Okay, Sheila.
My name is Sheila Lurkey, and I live at 712 Broadway Avenue. I have, outline of what, what our issues are, as well as I do have a petition signed by 37 people.
Okay. And those 37 people don't want it, right?
They don't. And I'm going to tell you why. This statement is in response to the matter of connecting Broadway Avenue to Terry Street and represents the residents of Broadway Avenue who have signed the petition. Objections to this project are related to the facts below. Broadway Avenue is a residential neighborhood. There are no sidewalks. There are four consecutive fairly severe curves in the middle. Inclined driveways, which cause children to frequently roll out into the street because there is no sidewalk. Heavy pedestrian traffic daily. There are walkers, joggers, bikers, whole families, walking dogs with strollers and biking. We have a group home, and there are two residents that I can set my clock by walking every single day. We have school buses loading and unloading on the street. Terry Street was built to accommodate the north industrial park traffic. There was a tree barrier planted, and concrete barriers have been placed. Broadway Avenue was not built for this traffic. Pelican River Road already exists on the east side of the college with a direct connection from Highway 34 to Terry Street. Exit to Broadway Avenue off of Highway 34 is also the entrance to heavy traffic into the west side of the college parking lot. I worked there for a number of years. That gets very congested as everyone's coming out of the parking lot, as they're coming on Highway 34, and there is a sharp turn to the left and a sharp turn to the right to get onto Broadway, all in that little area. Also, the first house on the west side of that entrance said her trees have been hit, mailboxes have been knocked over and damaged, and they have had people landing in their driveway and grass executing that turn off of Highway 34 onto Broadway. One block to the west on Highway 34 is a stoplight with a controlled right turn lane onto Richwood Road, which accommodates traffic going to Terry Street, which was built to accommodate the industrial park. Opening up Broadway Avenue would be a major safety issue for these reasons. It is a road integrity issue, and due to the above facts, we are requesting that the Detroit Lakes Council reject connecting Broadway Avenue to Terry Street and removing the cul-de-sac. The main reason for this is that there are a number of existing options to access Terry Street that were established to accommodate heavy traffic and protect neighborhood safety. I also have a personal experience, that is only me, that I observed, and this reminds, this kind of reminds me of, I lived on Highland Drive for 20-plus years. Township, that's a township road running south and north to Highway 34 and to Highway 10. And at some point in time, the residents of the county decided to use Highland Drive as a cut across road. So I watched that road deteriorate to the scrap heap that it is right now, and as we speak, millions of dollars are being spent to rebuild Highland Drive to accommodate the hundreds of cars a day that have been going across there when it was never intended for that. I would propose that we learn from the past and not repeat it by allowing Broadway the same fate. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Sheila. Has anyone else wished to speak to the issue? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Katie Bigger. My husband, daughter, and I live at 714 Broadway, better known as the house of, the cul-de-sac. I'm not going to lie, this road is the reason why we bought this house. It was a dream to raise a family in a cul-de-sac. The road's not only my home, it's also where my daughter goes to daycare. So Broadway Avenue means a lot to us. This quiet, family-oriented neighborhood has changed our lives. I love being able to see my neighbors on walks with families. I know most of the cars that are driving down my road, and they're people I trust. Our road has a lot of pedestrian traffic, and we feel safe taking our dog or our daughter on walks at any point in the day. I'm strongly against this plan that you are proposing to open up Broadway. We don't have any issues on this street. In fact, the only issues that would be creating would be opening this road up. We have a quiet street, it's used by the people that live there, and that's what a neighborhood is for. Neighborhoods are not meant to be shortcuts through town. You opening up Broadway will create the issues. This street will then become an entry point for people that don't need to be in the neighborhood. There are plenty of access roads to get to Terry Street or the businesses behind it. Terry Street, as I'm the last house on the Broadway, is heavily used by trucks, large vehicles, cars not wanting to be found, and cars that are looking for a little race. So why are we going to give them access into our neighborhood, where there's families and small children at almost all hours? I'm being honest and real when I'm saying I'm begging you to please not open up Broadway to Terry. We didn't ask for this, we don't need this, and what you will be doing is only adding problems to something that doesn't need to be fixed. I can assure you that if you go through with this plan, you will be adding problems to our neighborhood, potentially to local law enforcement, and you'll be creating an unsafe road for those families that live there. Please do not open Broadway to Terry Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Anyone else wish to speak?
Kevin McDonald, 709 Broadway Avenue. Just a couple points I want to make. I agree totally with the first two that spoke about our neighborhood. That was the number one reason I bought my house, was because it was on a cul-de-sac. Absolutely didn't think of any other issues at that time. That was the very first reason. Secondly, I also manage the Senex A&amp;W on Highway 34, so I'm pretty acutely aware of the traffic on 34. Opening up Broadway to Terry Street so that there's more traffic that will exit onto 34 without a controlled access is just asking for trouble. I mean, it's, it's really boils down to a safety issue or a convenience issue. Do you want the convenience so that a few people can make that cut across to the, the new buildings that are going to be going over there? Or do you want the safety issue? So, I mean, you guys are on record for your voting. You can vote safety or you can vote convenience, and to me, that's a, that's a real no-brainer. So I just ask that you deny this project and that it's tabled forever. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Any others?
Hi, Dan Holzgrohe. I live at the end of Legion Road, which is also a dead-end cul-de-sac, and I appreciate the city's snowplow guys, maintenance fellows. They have to come in down there, and they do a great job, but they come down there, they have no place but to snow. It's, it's, I know it's tough for them. I know the city doesn't like to have dead-end cul-de-sacs. And one day, progress is going to be determined, Legion will go out to 59. I like living back there, raised my kids back there, but being realistic, I know the road's going through, and that's progress. The town doesn't look like it did 20 years ago, and it's not going to look like this in 20 years. So for the city's sake and the growth of the city, I think you have to do what's best for the city. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? I knew you didn't come here just to watch good government in action.
My name is Heidi Voss, and I live at 608 Broadway, and I've been there for 21 years. And I would like to say that when I first read this letter, I immediately thought about the fact that we would become a shortcut for M State, middle school, anybody going to Highway 34, because if you, Richwood Road does get some condensate, you know, it gets congested in the morning when the buses are coming and everything. All those people will be coming from the north, I think would be very tempted to come down Broadway Avenue. While, while the bus picking up the people at the Divine House, the bus is loading up the kids, the garbage trucks are coming, it is a very curvy road. A semi-driver does not want to drive down that road, and I, and so there, I cannot see any benefit to opening it, because if we want to go to Terry Street, we can just walk to Terry Street. I walk there every day with my dog, and, and the number of people walking and doing really healthy, good things on that road is, is really positive to see. I love watching the people walk up and down that road. But I also work at M State, and that does bother me, the traffic would be, I, I can't see why it would be open for that. So I just wanted to say, there's wildlife, there's the soccer fields, there's a lot of traffic at times of the week and year for that, and I just would like to ask not to open it up.
Thanks, Heidi.
My name is Mr. John Wesley. I reside at 305 Broadway, and I oppose it. Opening up to Terry Street because of the extra traffic, the speeders. I remember when the ALC building used to be up there, and we had all them young kids tearing around, and we got them quieted down. We tried to get stop signs. Hal O'Connor and I went around, got a petition started, but the chief of police thought it wasn't necessary at that time. So I oppose it.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? If not, that public hearing is closed, and I would put the question to the council. If someone wants to make a motion, either for or against, go ahead.
I say we kill it for good and move on.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, the seconded, to not connect Broadway Avenue to Terry Street. Discussion?
Just one comment on it. I don't think this would add much to traffic flow or maintenance in Detroit Lakes, but it would be a huge headache to the people that are living on that street, so I'm going to vote in favor of the motion to kill it.
Okay, further discussion.
I'd just like to comment that, that cul-de-sac has been there for many, many, many years, and it's a unusually large cul-de-sac. And that land, it's got a great piece of land there that people like to buy to build a home, but that property belongs to the state of Minnesota. And state of Minnesota says that they will not sell that lot. So we talk about when the snowplows come, they could certainly put that snow on that lot there, because that's, there's never going to be a house there, because they've, many realtors have tried to buy, and they all get the same reply, it's not for sale because it's part of state of Minnesota's property. So, so much for that cul-de-sac. But also want, want people to realize that the city's in the process of buying the Cleveland Farm, and that's going to be additional property there for an additional industrial park. Plus, we're going to have the new food pantry that's going to be built off of that Terry Street for more traffic. And then we're also going to be adding in a proposed dental office for low-income families that'll have 25 employees. There'll be plenty of extra traffic coming in off that area. But furthermore, right now, we have three streets that empty off of Richwood Road, so these people can do these cut across, because they don't want to go down the Casey's Gas Corner there on 34 and Richwood Road to make the shortcut. So they, they'll come off of Homestead Street, they'll come off of Northland Street or Mountain View to do a quick shortcut, but then when they get up to, to Highway 34, they find out that the traffic is so heavy coming in from the east that they can't turn to get on, and they really didn't save any time at all, because they're going to wait there forever, depending upon the time of day. So I, I hope that we can keep this a residential area and not turn it into a commercial highway. I, I know that the people that live down on Terry Street, they're constantly talking about, we say there's no trucks, but trucks do go through, unless you have policemen down there all the time, they, they know when to slip through and so forth. So I hope that we'll keep this residential, and this is the third or fourth time that this is brought up, and these people that live out in that area, Sunset and Broadway, I, I think that we should reassure them that we can't keep bringing this up all the time, because it gets to be to the point where it's almost getting to be ridiculous every time something comes up on the new project, we got to open up the cul-de-sac there. There really is no place to open the two. It's just, it makes more congestion. So I, I hope that we go along with the motion and deny having this cul-de-sac opened up.
Further discussion.
I just have one comment. I generally don't make a whole lot of comments. Two things for me sway me. Number one, quality of life, and I think we want to preserve that for our citizens if possible. And it sounds like the initial plan in that area was to provide a barrier between the neighborhood and the industrial park and the traffic that that includes. And I think we need to, as a council, honor those kinds of plans and intentions even as time passes. So I will, I will be voting in favor of the motion as well.
Thank you, Wendy. Further discussion.
I just have a couple comments. That was the Cleveland Farm, and I don't think that the intention of, of this Terry Street was ever to dump truck traffic down from Freesons, down from metal sales. I don't drive a truck, I've driven large vehicles, but I'm sure as heck not going to drive down a residential curvy road when I've got a direct access to a main thoroughfare, whether it's Richwood Road or Richwood Road to Tower Road to get out to 59, or one of the through trunk highways. And I know that, you know, we always have the conversations of cul-de-sacs and quiet neighborhoods and speed and road construction, and the, the road's going to fall apart, but I don't see the, the increase in traffic. You know, I, I live on a street that was a cul-de-sac, and then it got opened up into being a through, through traffic. You know, most of the traffic in our neighborhood is still neighborhood traffic. It's, it's, if the kid next door is speeding, guess what? You go talk to the kid and you straighten him out. I don't see this as a main thoroughfare from Winnipeg to St. Paul. It's, it's not good planning to just do, do cul-de-sacs and just not let progress rain. So I guess I, I'm kind of thinking that I'll vote against the denial and putting it to bed forever.
Okay, further discussion. I'm going to call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for coming, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, so you help people. Kelsey?
I don't probably know that we're going to put a nuclear plant down there.
Jesus. Oh my goodness.
Without objection, I would like to move to agenda item 7C. That's under the Finance Committee Chairman Zeman.
Okay, item 7C. This is consideration to a resolution establishing preliminary budget and tax levy collected in 2023 and designating December 13, 2022, at 6:01 PM as the date for the public comment on the budget and proposed levy for the year 2023. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Heidi, where we are proposing a levy increase of 9.86%. Heidi?
Thank you, Chairman Zeman. So as, as Mr. Zeman pointed out, this preliminary budget and levy does include an increase in the levy of 9.86% over what was approved for the 2022 final levy. That increase is $650,433. And the major factors that went into this, and I'm sure that you all know that we, we held several budget meetings during the month of August and got together a number of times early in the morning to discuss all of these various factors, and, and this is what the group landed on. But major factors, I just wanted to highlight for you all that, that, you know, was a product of this increase. The biggest was local government aid, so the city is seeing a decrease in our local government aid from the state of Minnesota next year of $144,599. So that was a big factor in us having to raise our, our tax levy. Also, our union contracts are all up as of the end of 2022, so those are all unsettled and in negotiations currently. So we have penciled in some increased costs for wages and health insurance, knowing that, you know, when those at some point get finalized, there will be some sort of an increase in those contracts. There is also a substantial increase cost in workers' compensation insurance, particularly under the public safety area. This is a statewide issue that's, that's kind of trended over the past number of years, particularly in the police area. Just for example, our workers' comp insurance for our police department last year was around $60,000. For this next year, I'm budgeting $120,000. So literally 100% increase in, in what we have to budget because of the increase in workers' compensation rates, and then I think just overall claims that the League of Minnesota Cities, our insurance carrier, is seeing, excuse me. Other factors that went into this preliminary budget and levy is increased cost for natural gases. I'm sure you've all heard, you know, heating fuel and things like that are, are proposed to be quite a bit higher this next year and this next season, and so we've increased some of the budget line items to hopefully, you know, cover some of those increased costs. We've also added a full-time fire chief. There's been a lot of discussion revolved around that. Our current chief, Swanson, has given us notice that as of the end of the year, he would like to step away from that role. And at this time, we have decided that it's appropriate to add a full-time fire chief position. It's just the, the workload warrants that, to be a full-time staffed position. Other, other major factors in this budget include increased cost for capital equipment. As I'm sure you all know, if you go out to try to purchase anything, cost of anything is a lot higher now than it was a year ago even. And so any of our vehicles that are on equipment rotations, or any of our public works plow trucks, mowers for the parks department, things like that, we had to beef those up quite a bit just to be able to maintain our rotation schedules. We're also increasing our levy for our proposed new public works facility, and then also increasing the levy to pay back some of our existing debt that the city currently holds. So all of that kind of factored into that 9.86% increase. I'm also noting that there is no lake weed removal included into this preliminary budget and levy. I know that was an item that was talked about and was requested from the Lake Detroiters. However, that was not added into this preliminary budget and levy. The same was discussed with sidewalks, no removal. This, this was discussed at length also in our meetings, and, and it was just decided that at this point, the cost of doing so was just too prohibitive to, to include in this preliminary budget and levy, and so we chose not to include that. So that is my summary, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So I know there's at least one citizen here this evening that may want to comment. Brian, do you, do you want to make a comment at all?
I do, yes.
Okay, please come forward.
All right, thank you.
And if you would, again, state your name and address for our minutes, please.
I'm a little disappointed. I thought all of these people were here to talk about the same thing.
Me too.
All right. Good evening. My name is Brian Langauger, and I'd like to address the council regarding the city's decision to begin implementing the snow removal ordinance that was created in 2008. My wife and I are very small business owners in Detroit Lakes. We own five single, single-family homes within the city of D.L. Three of the homes are rental properties. The one that I'm speaking about tonight is located at 1147 West Avenue. It's on the corner of West and Willow, across the street from Burge's Nursery. It's a small, one-bedroom home that is typically rented by one person. We purchased the home in 2004. At that time, it was a foreclosure, and it was in very bad condition. Spent a lot of time and money fixing the property, tore down an old rundown garage, kicked out the woodchucks that were living in the garage, and built a new garage. The corner lot is a very large lot for that neighborhood. It's a beautiful lot with many oak and basswood trees, but there is about 110 feet of frontage on West Avenue and about 150 feet of frontage on Willow. And there is a public sidewalk on all 260 feet. I've spent a lot of time looking at public sidewalks in the residential neighborhoods of Detroit Lakes, what I have discovered, if there's a wide variety of sidewalks or non-sidewalks. Some streets have sidewalks on both sides, some neighborhoods have sidewalks only on one side, and some neighborhoods have no sidewalks at all. Some neighborhoods have sidewalks on busy through streets, and others do not. Some areas east of the high school have entire neighborhoods with no sidewalks at all, none. Some corner lots have no sidewalks, some have sidewalks only on one side, and a few corner lots, very few corner lots, have sidewalks on both sides. The purpose of my being here tonight is to point out the inequities that exist in enforcing the snow removal ordinance. If you're lucky enough to own a property that does not have a city-owned public sidewalk, then you don't have to worry about how you're going to get the snow removed from the sidewalk. If you're, if you are one of the unlucky owner, homeowners, you have to find a way to get the snow off the city-owned public sidewalk, either by shoveling the sidewalk yourself or try to find someone to do it for you. Good luck with that. Good luck with that. Or ignore the ordinance and be assessed by the city on your property taxes. In my case, it would cost me about six hundred and twenty-five dollars each time it snows. To have an ordinance that penalized the homeowner because the city decided to put a sidewalk in front of your house is unfair. If every homeowner in Detroit Lakes had a sidewalk, only then could the ordinance be enforced equitably. But that's not the case, and it's not going to change anytime soon. I understand that sidewalks are necessary to allow children to walk to school safely. I understand that my home on West Avenue is the closest home to Ross Rossman Elementary School on the west side of the railroad tracks, and West Avenue is the only way for many kids to cross the railroad tracks. Therein lies the problem. It's not my sidewalk that runs adjacent to my property. I don't use the sidewalk. I don't need the sidewalk. If my home was one block away on Linden Avenue, I wouldn't have to worry about snow removal. Linden Avenue has no sidewalks, none. It's like winning and losing the lottery. If I had known that I'd be forced to shovel or pay the city when I bought the home in two thousand four, I probably would not have bought it. But in two thousand four, there was an ordinance. The ordinance was created in two thousand eight, and the city has waited on two thousand until two thousand twenty-two to begin enforcing the ordinance. Another concern I have is that West Avenue is a main east-west artery in Detroit Lakes. Oftentimes, after we have a snowfall, the plows make many trips up and down West Avenue. Each time they make a pass, they push snow back on the sidewalk sidewalk that has already been shoveled. The sidewalk is about four feet from the curb, and this happens frequently. The ordinance applies to removing snow with within seventy-two hours of a snowfall. How will the city address the problem of snow that is pushed back onto the sidewalk by the snow plows? Thank you for the opportunity to bring to your attention the inequities of this change in city policy. I feel that the city should continue to do snow removal on public sidewalks. But the homeowners have public sidewalks that have public sidewalks should not be forced to pay for it. The expense should be shared citywide. The sidewalks are public and used by everyone and should be paid by paid for by everyone. Thank you. And an unrelated note, I just wanted to mention that this house at eleven forty-seven West Avenue uh last year had an estimated market value of eighty-five eighty-five thousand dollars. And it'll soon be assessed forty to fifty thousand dollars for this never-ending construction project that's taking place on West Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. So am I correct in stating that once we adopt this preliminary levy, we can't raise it in December? We can lower it?
That is correct.
Any any raising would have to occur this evening or at a special council meeting? Or do we have to adopt it tonight?
We have to adopt it before September thirtieth.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else in the audience that has anything they want to say about the sidewalk situation? Okay, Rob?
I I just wanted to say that uh prior to our August budget meetings, uh, all the council people that were there were asked to give us their goals and priorities. And I have to say that uh when we were all finished with meeting for the entire month, working on both Thursdays and Tuesdays and some Tuesdays, uh, we came out pretty much with what people thought as priorities. And and some of those priorities were special assessment policies and also work on affordable housing. We we wanted to work toward this full-time fire chief. We have money there for that. Uh, we also said we have to discontinue our reliance on the L G A funding. Uh, we at one time, we had as much as a million six hundred thousand dollars coming back from the state of Minnesota, but now we're down to under three hundred and ninety-three thousand. That'll continue shrinking. Uh, we're also said we have to look forward to to working on this public work facility and get that built. Uh, we did discuss about the snow removal. We did discuss about the weed removal from from Detroit Lakes, and we denied both of those. And then we all said we wanted to maintain our roads and try to keep our roads up kept to the way we should and uh keep maintaining those. So I I think overall, the the council, uh, when we had a finished product, we pretty much met most of the goals that we did have. But at this point, I would like to uh make a motion to give consideration to a resolution establishing a preliminary budget and tax levy collected in the for two thousand twenty-three and designating December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six oh one P. M. For the date of the public comment and the budget proposed levy of nine point eight-six. And I so move.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to establish our preliminary budget and tax levy and also to set our December council meeting for the public comment on the final budget proposed levy. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Without objection, I would like to move to agenda item six A.
Six A is to give give consideration to an amended management agreement with the Minnesota Flyers Gymnastics and authorizing the expansion of the Flyers Gymnastics Building. Uh, Public Works spent some time yesterday with Charlie going over the amended management agreement. Um, and with the one small change uh that you're all aware of, I'm sure, uh, changing the five thousand to fifty thousand, uh, the Public Works Committee uh agreed with the uh management agreement and would like to uh move to authorize the expansion of the Flyers Gymnastics Building.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the amended management agreement with the Minnesota Flyers and authorizing the expansion of their building. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now you can fundraise.
And all of you will appreciate it. So thank you guys so much.
So I know uh Mr. Green is here for a couple items, but is there anyone else here for an item that they'd like adjusted on the agenda? Dan, did you have anything tonight on here? Okay. Okay, well, let's go back to the top then, and we will adjourn the regular meeting and call the order of public hearing to receive public comments on the public works facility funding. So I don't know if we want to introduce Mr. Doug Green from Baker Tilly. Or Kelsey, do you have something or Heidi to lead in? Or turn it over to Mr. Green.
How about it, Doug?
Say that Mr. Green, uh, he works for a company called Baker Tellus, and he's a financial advisor to help us through the financing of this public work facility.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Doug Green, Baker Tilly, it's a pleasure to be here, and you really didn't have to accommodate my schedule. I've sat through hours and hours of council meetings before, so. But anyway, uh, just a little background on this, uh, why why we're here tonight and the action is that you're taking state statutes, uh, give municipalities the authority to incur debt, to issue bonds for various reasons. And those authorities are throughout the statutes. Um, and there's really no rhyme or reason to them. They're they've just been put in over time. Um, and each one of those, what I call authorities, permissions or whatever in statutes, says what you can borrow the money for, what that process is going to be, what kind of security you can put on it. And for facilities, uh, for cities, uh, they're it's it's named appropriately in state statutes general obligation capital improvement plan bonds. It's pretty intuitive. Uh, and that statute just says that you have to have a public hearing, that you have to put together a five-year plan. That five-year plan only includes those projects that you're going to finance under the statutory authority. Uh, so it is a modified plan. Uh, and uh, and then, you know, we can have this public hearing, and then it doesn't obligate the city to go forward, obviously, with the project. It just authorizes the city to um issue bonds if it chooses to in the future.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the issue of adopting a five-year capital improvement plan and authorizing the issuance of of bonds thereunder? And these would be C I P bonds for our new public works facility. And I don't think there's anyone in the audience that's here for that. So with that, the public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I'd um make a motion that would give consideration to a resolution adopting a five-year capital improvement plan and authorize the issuance of bonds thereunder in an amount of uh eleven million dollars for our public works facility building.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution, a resolution adopting a five-year capital improvement plan and authorizing the issuance of bonds thereunder. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So as long as Mr. Green has had the floor, we might as well do seven C regarding our bond sales. Doug?
Okay, again, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, what this is another part of the process. Uh, we are issuing bonds as Heidi appropriated the kitchen sink bonds. We've got a lot of different projects in here, three different, three different housing projects, the uh Westlake project and the water meter project. Uh, I believe I didn't see in the pre-sale summary is in the agenda. Is that in their packet? I'm not sure. Okay, okay. Uh, well, if you did see the amortization, if you ever come across amortization schedules, you'll see all of those projects, um, itemized, that they're they're listed separately. But what we do for convenience purposes, uh, number one, it reduces on the cuts down on the administrative costs by combining all these projects together. Uh, and it frankly makes them more marketable. The larger the bond issued, the more marketable it is, more investment banks are going to be. Um, it's it's going to garner their attention to come bid on them. So uh, it it's a great idea to to couple all these projects together and finance them. And we can, we can treat them individually, amortize them over, you know, different years. We have different assessment, you know, revenues coming over time. That's all just for our internal budgeting and accounting purposes. Again, we're just out into the public. We're going to sell uh the bonds over um over twenty years. And quite frankly, they just want the general obligation of the city and the the strong credit rating of the city, and they're not too concerned about what you're using the money for. They just want that security. So the resolution in front of you this evening is now the statutory required. Uh, step in the process is just making sure that everyone's on board, that we're going to that we're moving forward with the process, putting together an official statement, what we call an offering document. We'll post it out there. We'll go through a credit rating call, which I'm sure will go great. Uh, and then we will take bids on October tenth, correct? October eleventh, excuse me, um, in the morning, and then bring them to uh the regular council meeting that night for your consideration.
Sounds good. Thank you, Doug.
Okay, then if Heidi, if you could give a recap of, it's going to be the amount of seven million three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but would you kind of give us a recap of where these monies are going to be spent?
Yep, so as Doug mentioned, it's it's I've called it the kitchen sink of bonds because we've kind of been accumulating a number of projects over the past year or so. Um, and and now we're sort of bonding for all of the costs of those projects. And and as as Doug mentioned, we're they're being repaid by various funding sources. So the projects included in this bond is Lake Forest Eighth, Ridge View, and Long Pines Estates Phase Three. Those are the three housing subdivision projects that are included. Obviously, those are being paid back by assessments. Um, and then there's a a small stormwater portion that is the city's portion um that is being paid back by the Stormwater Fund. There's also Westlake Drive Phase One and Phase Two. Uh, those bonds are being paid back by the Water and Sewer Utility Fund. And then also, there's an assessment portion, if you recall, with Westlake Drive Phase Two. So that will go to pay back um that portion of those bonds. And then also, um, the Water Meter Replacement Project, which, as you know, has kind of been this ongoing saga of do we have nodes, do we not have nodes? We now have nodes, and we're hopefully going to be able to get a vendor back in to uh complete that project here soon. But this is um that that water fund didn't didn't, we didn't really want the water fund to have to pay for all those costs in cash. And so to be able to bond and finance that over ten years um was a better option rather than just taking the money out of reserves and and depleting those reserves. So those are the projects that are um that are being financed with these bonds.
Thank you, Heidi. Rob?
Okay, with that, I would make a motion that would give authorization setting the bond so for the two thousand twenty-two C bonds in the amount of seven thousand three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And I so move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution authorizing and setting the bond sale for the two thousand twenty-two C bonds. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you very much.
And I, anybody else want to move an item on the agenda? If not, we're going to just take it from the top. So with that, we'll move back to the Community Development Committee Chairman Joseph.
All right, I'll just preface a couple of these. These are all second readings. Uh, the first one is about some cleaning up some language and signs. And then we got a bunch of other ones that are um cleaning up some things with our M S four. So if we want to debate each one of them, we can, but I just want to give us a little bit of preface. We also have a couple of them that we do need summary ordinance is approved, so we don't spend a ton of money on the newspaper unless you want to spend a bunch of money advertising and filling up sheets of paper. So item A is consideration to second reading and adoption of ordinance four ninety-two, amending the sign ordinance relative to allowing signs in residential districts. Uh, CDC reviewed this last night, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance four ninety-two, which amends our sign ordinance. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Item B is consideration to a second reading and adoption of ordinance four ninety-three, amending the zoning ordinance to allow dental clinics with laboratories in the I-one light industrial district. CDC recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance four ninety-three, which amends our ordinance allowing dental clinics in the I-one district. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C is consideration to second reading and adoption of ordinance four ninety-four, amending the city code to include section five fourteen relative to pet waste. Uh, CDC recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance four ninety-four, which amends our city code regarding pet waste. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Item D is consideration to the second reading and adoption of ordinance four ninety-five, amending city code and adds section five fifteen, salt and de-icing material storage. CDC reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance four ninety-five, amending our city code regarding salt and de-icing material storage. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item E is consideration to the second reading and adoption of ordinance four ninety-six, amending the city code's section one zero zero seven relative to stormwater management. CDC reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the summary of ordinance four ninety-six.
Not yet. The ordinance itself. Just the ordinance.
First.
Oh, I'm sorry.
First, yeah.
First line.
Consider, we'll give second reading and adopt ordinance four ninety-six, amending our city code relative to stormwater management. Correct? Correct. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item E one is consideration to approving the summary ordinance of four ninety-six, amending city code section one zero zero seven relative to stormwater management. Recommend approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the summary of ordinance four ninety-six, amending our city code relative to stormwater management, and this will require a four-fifth vote to pass. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Item F is consideration to second reading and adoption of ordinance four ninety-seven, amending city code or section one zero zero eight relative to stormwater illicit discharge and connection. CDC recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance four ninety-seven, which amends our city code relative to stormwater illicit discharge and connection. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Item F one is consideration to approving the summary ordinance of four ninety-seven, amending city code section one zero zero eight relative to stormwater illicit discharge and connection. We reviewed this last night at the CDC meeting. It took a long time. Uh, after much discussion, we recommend approving this, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the summary of ordinance four ninety-seven, amending the city code relative to stormwater illicit discharge and connection. I have no idea why it took so long, but. Discussion?
What was the hangup?
There was no hangup. I just wanted to drop.
All right, well, you had me, you had me there, Dan. I'm like, what am I missing here?
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Anything else, Dan?
Um, no, most of those are just to clean up our M S four permit and we're we're trying to do, pass those.
Okay, we're back to Madeline.
Yep, item B.
Yep. Item B. Consideration to a memo from the Public Works Director for quotes to grind brush at the compost site. Sean wanted to just do a quick mention what we're doing here.
Mayor and council, every fall, we have started to grind our, um, tree branches, um, at the compost site. And it's, it is the same as last year. We are working with the county. The county is paying thirty percent of that bill, um, because residents, uh, putting waste in there also. And they are grinding their own site, and we split the mobilization fifty-fifty, but they are paying for thirty percent of grinding that site.
Publics reviewed those quotes and, um, moved to accept Sean's recommendation. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the quote to grind the brush at the compost site. And we don't burn it anymore, right?
No.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Consideration to the, to the conveyance agreement for the Spees Wendell property. And, um, who's going to handle this, when Kelsey or?
John.
Charlie?
Or Charlie?
No, it's a Charlie.
Uh, this is Westlake Drive Phase Two. It's, uh, euphemistically referred to as the bowling alley property. Uh, there was, uh, according to the plans, we needed to acquire a couple of temporary easements and also a little bit of additional permanent easement. We've negotiated with the landowner over a period of time. You did approve a resolution for eminent domain, uh, either last month or the month before, I can't remember. Uh, but in any case, we've worked out, uh, an agreement with the, uh, the landowner to voluntarily provide those easements. Uh, the agreement is this conveyance agreement. Uh, we are, um, going to compensate the landowner for the appraised value of the easements. Um, and, uh, if you can recall, there's a series of trees along the, um, east side of Westlake Drive, uh, separating the bowling alley property. Uh, we are also providing, uh, money for the landowner to replace those trees. Uh, it would be the landowner's responsibility to place, to replace the trees, not us. And so, um, while this does exceed, uh, the settlement does exceed the appraised value, uh, by the amount of those, um, tree replacements, uh, it will still be much less than proceeding, uh, with a contested eminent domain proceeding. And so my recommendation for the council is to approve this conveyance agreement. Okay? Any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Thanks, Charlie. Um, Public Works gave consideration to that conveyance agreement and Charlie's explanation last night. And, uh, we move to, uh, adopt that conveyance agreement.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the conveyance agreement for the Spees Wendell property. Discussion?
Is any of this cost being shared with the county, knowing that they're a partner in the project? Or is this just strictly county?
This is strictly Detroit Lakes because it relates to the trail and not to the roadway.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Um, I'm going to hold off on the Cindy Engineers' monthly, uh, status report until we do the two new items that were in front of you.
Okay.
Uh, the first one is a parade permit application from Detroit Lakes High School, uh, for the DLHS homecoming parade, which will begin in front of the high school on Roosevelt Avenue, uh, north to Willow, turn west on Willow to Washington, turn north on Washington, and end at Washington Square Mall. This will happen between two and three thirty on October seventh. Um, and we move to grant that permit.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the homecoming parade. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
And the second one is a transient merchant application from Arturo Serna, uh, for a meat sale in the Menards parking lot, September twenty-first through the twenty-fourth. This is a four-day USDA frozen meat sale. Um, they have, uh, there are some things that they need to, um, complete. And when that's all done, we will grant that transient merchant license.
So do you want to approve it tonight, though?
I think so, yes. Gloria's got that.
Okay. So is that a motion?
Yes.
Second, motion been made and seconded to approve the transient merchant application for.
Country Fresh Farms.
Country Fresh Farms. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Uh, the next, uh, item then, uh, is the acceptance of the City Engineers' monthly project status report. So John, you get to talk to us.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, obviously plenty of construction activity going on around town, probably a little much for this time of year. But, uh, where we're at, Westlake Drive Phase One, lots of activity going on there. Um, the city's contractors primarily working on installation of water main and storm sewer. Um, we're getting pretty close to wrapped up with the underground stuff, sort of the southern half of the project, starting to move into the northern half. At the same time, Public Utilities has a, a contract going on relocating the overhead electric along with some of the telecommunications lines that are through that area as well. All that's getting relocated underground. So lots happening there, um, long ways to go certainly, but good progress. Uh, Westlake Drive Phase Two, so this would be from County Route Six to the Pelican River. Um, Hogue is probably a little over halfway with the, um, underground utilities on that project. Again, kind of the river through breezy shores is pretty well wrapped up. Um, now they're moving into that area, heading towards Six, uh, sanitary sewer. Again, pretty good progress, uh, you know, fighting the groundwater a bit. Um, may start to see some curb and gutter as early as next week, sort of happening in the southern portion of that project. So it's moving along. Uh, Berquess subdivision, uh, that was on the consent agenda for, uh, final payment on that project. And that project is done. Nothing to report on the Brison subdivision. Willow Homes and Fraser, um, that one is just about finally wrapped up. Um, they have, uh, one cement truck for, for pavement to put down tomorrow, and then the pavement's done on Willow. Curb and gutter is done. Uh, what'll be left is sidewalks and driveways that they can start working on. Uh, we're going to attempt to try to focus some of that between Rosman and Summit, so that we can maybe do a staged opening and open some of that, uh, rather than waiting to open all of it. Um, I, I certainly hope that sometime in the next week to ten days that we are real close to done and wrapped up and open up that, so. Lake Forest Seventh also was on the consent agenda for final pavement. That project is, is done, just pending some final paperwork. Highland Drive, uh, that project's being administered by Becker County, but just a matter of update. Uh, it sounds like that's moving along really, really nicely. Uh, they're sort of starting to put Class Five down, I think, on the, the northern half, north of Eighth Street towards, uh, Highway Thirty-four. And they're working on grading, uh, south of, of Eighth Street, but project's moving on real well. Long Pines Estates Phase Three, um, I would say that we're probably about eighty percent done with underground utilities out there. Uh, so sometime in the next couple of weeks, uh, we might start to see some street work happening. Uh, but again, moving on pretty well. Becker County Museum, DLCC parking lot, uh, that's been moving rather slowly, frankly. Um, there's some complexities there, needing to get an electric transformer set so that they can demo the old building, which all of that sort of, uh, comes back into slowing down progress. But I think we're at the end of that. We should see the old museum being demoed here probably sometime in the next week or so. And that'll lead to, uh, the contractors starting to do some grading and curb and gutter in the first phases of the parking lot. So a lot of work to do there. Uh, nothing to report on Campbell Linden or Summit, and nothing to report at this point on Becker County.
Any questions for John regarding the projects?
Uh, two questions, Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Uh, one, with Becker County parking lot, or excuse me, the museum, is that still tentative this fall, or is that kind of punted till the spring?
No, it's still on the plan to try to get it done this fall.
Okay. Uh, second question, and I know everybody here's probably taking a lot of heat on Willow. Um, can I pour concrete? I mean, what are we looking for?
They are looking for.
Okay.
They would hire.
I mean, if, I don't know, they're, I do T-shirts. Uh, I don't know what the completion date is on that, but that dra- has dragged on.
Twenty-third.
Awful long time. If we've, there's any recourse to regain some of those fees, I would instruct you to work with city staff to see how we can get that done. There's been a lot of pain on that one.
Uh, duly noted that they, the deadline, there will likely be no forgiveness, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Further discussion? Questions? If not, Madeline.
Uh, I may move to accept that status report.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the City Engineers' monthly project status report. Just further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, John.
We are done.
Okay, back to the Finance Committee. Ron?
Okay, the first item is seven, it's a consideration to the approving the DLCC budget for two thousand twenty-three. You have the information, uh, in your packet. Uh, Peter was here and gave us an update. The membership is getting back to, uh, pre-COVID numbers. It's not quite there yet, but it's moving closer. Uh, they, they currently have a three to thirty thousand dollar positive cash flow. Uh, they're working on getting their new project in the old gym done, so they're, they're moving along. And they have a, a new director for the theater now. And so they're ready to go for their new year, and we wish them best luck. But I move that we go ahead and approve the requested budget for two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Detroit Lakes Community and Cultural Center budget for the year two thousand and twenty-three. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And it's really good to see that they're bouncing back. They had a tough time.
Okay, next item, seven D. Consideration, resolution amending the bylaws Detroit Lakes' Fire Department Relief Association provided additional five hundred dollars per year for a lump sum pension of ten thousand three hundred dollars for each year effective, uh, uh, as of April first, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, this incentive is, uh, is needed because we're trying to get new added volunteers. Uh, like the chief said, uh, last two months ago, we said we've got, uh, four new volunteers, and two of them already, uh, have, are not going to be able to continue with the program because of their workplace. And so, you know, we need, we need the volunteers, and this is to help, uh, get those added, uh, people wanting to be volunteer firemen. So I, so move that we go ahead and approve the ten thousand three hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution amending the bylaws of the Fire Department Relief Association to provide a lump sum pension of ten thousand three hundred for each year effective April one, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item seventy, a consideration to approving quotes for the vestos, a abatement here at the City Hall. Uh, Council, do you want to give us a little update on that?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, of course, this is anticipation of moving ahead with the City Hall remodel project, which we don't have that bid opening until the twenty-ninth of September. However, uh, anticipation for that, we went and got quotes for doing the asbestos abatement. Uh, you can see on the, the quotes, there's basically just, uh, a few areas, uh, of floor tile that's been identified that contains asbestos in the, uh, the bathrooms in the lower level, and then, uh, the storage room and maintenance room here on the main level. But for scheduling purposes, seeking, uh, council approval tonight, so that way we can get them scheduled, because basically I need to have the asbestos abatement done between the time when staff moves out and before the contractor comes. So I, I just want to get them on the schedule. Okay?
Okay, so go ahead and, uh, move that we go ahead with a bid of eight thousand nine hundred dollars for that quote.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the code for the asbestos abatement here at City Hall. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, also, in front of you, you have a HRA levy. And, uh, as you know, when we talked during Finance, uh, the, the people from HRA were here and gave a presentation, uh, so we can get them to help with these, uh, low-income housing updates and, and so forth. But the Detroit Lakes House Authority, also known as HRA, has been, uh, approved now by the Minnesota Department of Commerce, uh, and for their, uh, tax exemption. And they now have the, the state operating number, so they can go ahead and work on this project, go out and, uh, advertise, uh, to the homeowners that they have money to help people of low income to fix up their homes. And, uh, with, this is good news because it's, it's taken nine months. It took out our Tilt County almost twelve months. This is a tough thing to get, but we finally got it. So I, I, uh, would make a motion that we would go ahead and, uh, accept the, uh, HRA levy for next year.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to, uh, approve the HRA levy for another year. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, and then Heidi, if you could maybe just give us a, an update on how we're doing on our food and beverage and so forth on that.
Ooh, you caught me, Ron. All right, so, um, let me pull up my reports. Um, so food and beverage and local option sales tax, um, receipts this year have been quite strong. Um, I did receive some, um, final figures for June, which ended up showing, um, our food and beverage tax, um, showed for Ju- the month of June, an increase of eleven point five six percent over two thousand twenty-one figures. So June ended up being the, the best month that we've, we've ever, or I'm sorry, June of two thousand twenty-two ended up being the best June we've ever had since the tax was put into place. And so, um, it looks like, and it sort of feels like, um, you know, the, the establishments are maybe bouncing back a bit from the pandemic. Um, you know, we'll kind of wait and see, but May and June were, were pretty decent months. Um, May was up thirteen point six nine percent. So overall, um, so far this year, um, you know, we are up a, a good three point three nine percent over last year at this time. So numbers are looking fairly decent on food and beverage tax, so that is good news. Um, overall, on the local option sales tax side, that's again, um, the half-cent sales tax that goes to pay back those, um, costs of that new, um, beautiful new police department. Um, we have, the final June numbers did come in, and that showed an increase over last year of eighteen point nine six percent, so just under nineteen percent. Um, again, very strong sales collections, um, on that local option sales tax. So, um, year to date in two thousand twenty-two, um, January through June, we had collected just under one million dollars. So for half a year, just under one million dollars is pretty fantastic to get that sort of collections, especially when we, you know, in the beginning had thought we would only collect about a million dollars a year total. Um, so very good news all around. Um, we'll just hope that that trend continues. And then also, um, on the liquor store front, um, I always kind of steal Randy's thunder because I'm the finance person, but, uh, Randy and his crew have been extremely busy over there. They also had a banner month in August. Um, they were right, just under a hundred thousand, um, more in sales than last year. So, um, very, very busy over at the liquor store as well.
Thank you, Heidi.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Ron?
That's all, Your Honor.
Okay, we're going to move to the Public Safety Committee Chairman Wenner.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, item A is, um, considering, consideration in approving the job description and advertisement for the new fire chief position. So Public Safety reviewed this actually at the last couple of meetings, but last night we recommended, um, recommended approval of this, and I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the job description and advertisement for our new full-time fire chief position. Discussion on the motion?
Just a couple of things, Your Honor.
Yep.
If we can get this approved tonight, um, we'll be able to get app, uh, advertisement out, be able to get applications in by the end of October, do interviews in November, hopefully make the offer in December, get a new chief on, and by beginning of January, so.
And you'll still be on board then, too.
Yes, actually. At least for the offer. Anyway, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
And then I have item B here, Your Honor.
Yep.
Um, which is, uh, a resolution to accept a five thousand dollar donation from Dale and Denise Thompson for the Fire Department. Thought it was important to bring it to the meeting tonight when somebody makes a donation like that. Um, we'd like to acknowledge that. And of course, the, uh, Public Safety Committee recommended accepting that, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to, uh, adopt a resolution accepting a five thousand dollar donation from Dale and Denise Thompson for the Fire Department. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
And then one more item, Your Honor. We received a, a grant from the, uh, DNR, uh, for the Fire Department, and this is in relation to our, um, grass fire, um, and this is in relation to our grass fire efforts that we make. I don't think it was too bad of a spring, but fall is shaping up to be pretty dry here. So I think we're going to use that to help outfit another pickup truck with some equipment that we can use, so...
And we got the grant from where?
From the DNR.
DNR grant.
So anyway, we recommend accepting this money. It's $5,000, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve acceptance of a $5,000 grant from the DNR for the Fire Department. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Is that it, Dan?
That's all I have, Your Honor.
So Chief Swanson was Dale or Denise on the Fire Department at one time? Do you know them? I guess I don't know them either, but we appreciate their donation. Pardon? Yeah, well, that's good. So we'll move to the Liquor and Gambling Control. Chairman Wookiee?
Item 9A. Consideration to the issuance of a Sunday liquor license to the Eagles Club. It was unbeknownst to us that they did not have a Sunday liquor license prior to this. So we feel the Eagles Club needs one, and we would give a positive recommendation for the issuance of a Sunday liquor license.
All right, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to issue a Sunday liquor license to the Eagles Club. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Anything else, Matt?
One last thing, steal Randy's thunder again. He said beer prices are going up, so maybe advantageous a stock-up. Is that true, Randy?
It is.
Okay.
Everything's going up. Thank you, Matt. Anything to bring to the council from the Public Utilities Commission, Matt?
There is none.
All right. We have a good candidate who is considering going onto the HRA Board, but I can't appoint that, recommend appointment to this evening. So hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have somebody in place for that. I would like to recommend appointing Ruston Lippincott, who is a new person with our Detroit...
Community theater.
Community Homes Theater, right, for the Tourism Bureau to fill the vacant seat of Rachel Hofstrand. And I would recommend appointing Ruston.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to appoint Ruston Lippincott to the Tourism Bureau. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. I would also recommend reappointing Tom Klebe to the Police Civil Service Commission for another term. And I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to appoint Tom Klebe to another term on the Police Civil Service Commission. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Balance of the information announcements are basically the council dates, the joint governance meeting dates, for the balance of the year. Anything else from the city staff that needs to come before the council this evening?
Mayor and council has pointed out, with the election in November, we'll have the city council meeting on Monday, November 7th, so committee meetings will all be reshuffled again, too, so...
We have them pretty much all on Monday again?
I think so.
And then, Kelsey, information about when we might have our last meeting in this, so people can clean out their desk and so forth?
Ron, I love your optimism. I really do. Yeah, I mean, potentially, we'd be looking at having council here in October. But potentially, if we have a favorable bid come in at the end of September and award the bid, maybe the contractor would hopefully be mobilizing construction at the end of November, or end of October, early November. So November council meeting may be in a new location. We have a couple of options we're still exploring, so stay tuned on that.
Dan, anything else for the good of the order?
Nothing else, Your Honor.
Jamie, Natalie?
Good.
No, sir.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Well, I just want to say that from May 1st to September 1st, those are busy months for the Detroit Lakes, and I think our entire staff, regardless of where your job is in the city, everybody's done a great job. And they've made our city look good, made our city be safe. There's so many things that we kind of take for granted because it happens all the time, but it happens because we've got good people working for us, and just say thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks, Dan. Ron? Dan?
Nope.
Lindy?
Nothing. I'll second Ron Sennabans.
I'm just glad the media knows that we're not plowing people's driveways and we're not picking up weeds.
The business of this council has come to a conclusion, and the meeting is adjourned.